Okay, good evening and welcome to the monthly meeting of the Wycomico County Board of Education. As we always do, we begin our meeting with the pledge to the flag led by one of our fine students. Tonight is Jasmine DeZomo. Jasmine, the floor is yours. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So Jasmine is coming to us from the blended virtual program. She's in fifth grade there. So we're excited to have her. Jasmine, did you have anybody that you came here with?
Oh, yeah, my mom is outside.
Okay, what's her name?
Alan.
Okay, well, we're gonna say hello to her anyway, and we have a certificate for you here and a flag. So thank you, you did a great job. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Good job.
Okay, 3.2, approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'm moved to approve.
It's our second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried. Agenda is approved. 3.3, moment of silence. The past month, we lost three colleagues or former colleagues. Margaret Mitchell worked at Salisbury Elementary, Delmar, and Wycomico High Schools, 36 years of service. Yannick Galen was a five-year-old youth scheduled to attend West Salisbury Elementary School. And Joe Ollinger, who served on the Board of Education for two years, former board member, served with Mr. Palmer, Ms. Fitzgerald, and myself. So if you would, take a moment to recognize these individuals in your own way. Thank you. 3.4, return to student reps to the boards after the summer's over. Seated at the table with us, student rep from James M. Bennett High School, Kara Lewis. Kara, welcome.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Stauffer and fellow board members.
Is her mic on, Mr. Palmer? There we go.
Testing? Oh, great. Good afternoon, Superintendent Stauffer and fellow board members. My name is Kara Lewis, and I am the executive president of J and B Student Government Association this school year. I look forward to meeting and communicating with all of you throughout the year and being the voice of Bennett's student body. Before the school year officially started, the SGA hosted several freshman orientations and gave tours to our newest students. Later, J and B had two open houses that both had fantastic attendance. These events featured numerous club tables where students of all grades could easily find ways to get involved at school, pursue their passions, and make new friends. Clubs are now starting up, and participation is skyrocketing, especially in comparison to the past years of COVID. On another note, sports season has finally begun, and our student body is eager and excited to show our peers support at games. The hype of our student sections is unparalleled. The SGA has completed a tentative full-year calendar of student events, and we are quite excited to have pep rallies back in our gym for the first time since 2020. Other events we're currently planning include a trunk-or-treat with Bennett Middle School, where we can show the community what it means to be a Clipper. And of course, right now, the SGA is working with the school to finalize the date for our homecoming dance with the theme of neon eighties. Freshmen will be elected into the SGA in the coming weeks, where they'll join us in working to achieve our goals for the year. We're working on finding new ways to promote inclusivity and celebrate the diversity of our school's students. It is truly evident how excited the student body is to get involved at school this year, and we cannot wait for the many great things to come. Again, I look forward to working with all of you this year. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to hearing from you every month. Thank you. Wycomico High School, Julia Matthews. Do you want to come to the ta- is it, mic at the table hot? They can come, she can come sit? Unless you want to stand up there, it's up to you. Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Julia Matthews, and I am honored to be Y High's student representative at this meeting, as well as getting to share the accomplishment Y High have most recently achieved. Although the students only have one first day, multiple days go into preparation for it. On our student, on our teacher's first day back, SGA, Y High administration, cheerleaders, and business teacher Ms. Wallace put together a welcome-back teacher breakfast. During the two weeks leading to the first day of school, the faculty, SGA, and NHS worked together to create a smooth transition into the new school year. SGA and National Honors Society members came together to help teachers set up their room after some building improvements and a summer away. In order to make this transition smoother for incoming freshmen, we held a freshman barbecue. At this event, each family was given personalized tours, delicious food was provided, and got to see many activities that go on Y High. Our sports teams have also been hard at work. Both junior varsity and varsity volleyball have two wins, one against Bennett and another against PokéBook. Varsity boys soccer won their game against Maradella. Varsity football has also started off their season with two big wins, against Washington and North Carolina. Our sports teams will continue to work hard as their season progresses, and we all look forward to celebrating their accomplishments and success on and off the field. Y High teachers are also earning big accomplishments for our school. Biology teacher Rebecca Matthews was chosen as a finalist for Maryland Teacher of the Year. We are anxiously awaiting the results, which are set to be announced October 6. Physical education and health teacher Shannon Whittington was awarded the Simon McNeil Award. This award recognizes teachers who demonstrate outstanding innovation in teacher health education or physical education, along with the active involvement in school and county affairs. The award will be presented to Ms. Whittington at the SHAPE Maryland Award Ceremony on Saturday, November 12. While we are proud of the accomplishments we have achieved, there are also so many things that we look forward to. SGA is holding class elections currently and planning the first pep rally since February 2020. We are also planning on holding homecoming outside, as long as weather permits. The PTA is parenting with SGA to run football concessions this season. Y High is very proud of the accomplishments we have achieved so far and looking forward to a very successful 2022 to 2023 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. From Maradella High School, Shanaya Matthews. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, I am from Maradella. I go by Nia Matthews. So we have not had our first SGA meeting. We're actually holding our first meeting tomorrow during flex. But last year, we had an interest meeting. We had about 45 kids attend it. And we started, last year, my advisor and I, Mrs. Keen, decided that we would start developing committees within the SGA, because we hadn't had that before. We have the fundraising committee, the fundraising and sales committee, charity committee, teacher of the month, and advertising. So at the interest meeting, the kids got to sign up for which one they were interested in. And then, over the last couple of days, we took the time to assign them to what we thought was fit. On our agenda for tomorrow, we have the homecoming themes, because we have not finalized a homecoming theme. We had one last year, but we just want to see, like, clarify and see this, what the school wants to do. Because my goal this year is to have the biggest student outreach ever, just make sure that everyone's satisfied. We also, so with homecoming, we have a very tight budget right now, because we had to spend all our money last year that way didn't roll over, because much would not roll over. So we are trying to decide on a fundraiser. We were looking at the bonfire, which is one that we used to have a couple of years ago. It was a really big event. A lot of students enjoyed it. But if you guys didn't know, Maradella is under construction, so it really limits our campus as far as where we can have the bonfire. And it also just causes a lot of restrictions with a lot of the events that we want to hold this year. So I met with my principal this morning, and we talked about how it may be hard to get a permit for the bonfire, because it's still hot outside. And then also, with the construction, again, limits our campus. So we're gonna push that off, and instead, we're looking at doing a princess slash prince and knight fundraiser for the elementary kids at Westside and Northwestern, where basically the kids would rotate, and we'd have like different stations for them. They get to come and dress up as like Disney princesses and knights, or whatever they want to do. And then, we also want to start holding themed games. Maradella does not have a football team. I was informed that some people did not know that. We have soccer games. So that's what our homecoming games are. And our homecoming date is set for the 15th, and then we have the game afterwards, because of, it's at the county stadium this year, so that limited our dates as well. So we're gonna start having themed homecoming, not themed homecoming games, themed games. We are having a themed homecoming game. That one will be light up the night with like glow sticks and neon. And then, we're gonna start rotating between each game, because the boys and girls usually play both when one week. So we'll take turns with that. And as far as instruction at Maradella, so because we are in construction, over half the school is in portables this year. And they've been really strict with like hall passes, which is good. We have campus patrol that patrols the campus, make sure other kids are safe, there's no one like skipping. And it has actually went really well. There's not been, I don't think there's been much problems, so, yeah, that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From Parkside High School, Daphne Min.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daphne Min, and I'm honored to be here tonight as the representative of Parkside High School. Over the summer, we've had a lot of great opportunities for freshmen to get used to the climate of Parkside through a lot of freshman orientations, tours, and info sessions that the guidance counselors happily gave out. That night, it was open to everyone. And then, we had a very successful back-to-school night with more freshmen than I have, I've ever s- well, I guess you can't really say that. I've been out for COVID for a lot. But a lot of freshmen throughout the back-to-school night, and the teachers were really happy to welcome them back to the classroom. We've had a great first week, opening with like staff and students. Our theme this year is going to be Ram Fam Reboot. Basically, it's a plan to get our school back on track to how it was a couple of years back, where it was really in its prime. So everybody this year has gotten new shirts, all the staff and students matching shirts to represent a new, like, symbolize a turning of a new chapter and into a new phase. This year, one of our students, Aleal Turner, was selected as College Board National Recognition Program aworder. He was the National African American rec- he won, sorry, he won the National African American Recognition Award and the National Indigenous Award as well. And fall sports have gotten off to a strong start. It was great to see the amount of Parkside school spirit, especially in the student section. This year around, we've had a lot of good games in the past few weeks, especially our last two stadium football games. Our upcoming homecoming, we're still in a work in progress, but I guarantee it'll be a lot of fun, and you'll be able to see a lot of our students having fun as well. We'll have our homecoming football game before the homecoming, unfortunately, but we'll still be able to have a lot of fun later in the day. And we look forward to having a successful year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to all the student reps for your reports. We look forward to that portion of the meeting every month, and we're glad that you could make it, and thank you very much. So 3.5, superintendent's report. Dr. Stauffer.
Thank you, Mr. Malone, fellow board members. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. I was very excited to complete a visit to each school, to present and speak with faculty of each school and hear from them and what their questions are, and take their input and feedback as well, prior to students returning. I also feel really good about the success of those school visits and appreciate all the feedback that we have received so far from across the county. We're looking to schedule some of these same sessions, as well with students and parents, over the next few months as a part of the community engagement portion of the superintendent's entry plan. Myself and the three assistant superintendents were able to split and visit all the schools the first two days for school last week. And I know a number of central office staff, as well as others in leadership here in our school system, were able to go and visit schools this first week of school as well. Our goal is to be as visible as possible, and we've discussed that as a staff, and we're moving forward, starting the year in that way. The energy has been positive, and we always have things to improve, that's for sure, and that's certainly recognized as we move forward this year. But the overall spirit that I'm seeing, the energy that I'm feeling, and what I'm hearing has been very positive around the school system. So I was excited about that as we move forward this first week of school and into a new school year. I'm also excited to announce that the superintendent's open door is being re-instituted this year. I'm working with staff currently to schedule and announce those dates, so stay tuned for that. It's important to us as a school system to have those opportunities for parents and staff to meet with me. So we'll put those opportunities out there and move forward as we can. And then also, I want to say that I'm excited to say that our school system, that we are very interested in expanding our school resource officer division. This was important to me and something that I talked with staff. Once I was coming into the superintendent position, we're in the beginning stages of discussing this with the sheriff's office. We currently have 10 school resource officers, one in each of our middle and high schools, as well as our Choices Academy here in Wycomico County. Also, our school resource officers are assigned to cover the elementary schools in Wycomico. But we are still very interested in expanding that division, and we're gonna begin talking with our sheriff's department in process to be able to do that. We do currently exceed the requirements of the Maryland Center for School Safety with the number of school resource officers that we do have assigned to our schools. But again, this is something that we have talked about as a staff. I've heard from the stakeholders across our county, as well as the teachers that I was able to meet with prior to school beginning, and that's something that we are very interested in expanding here in our county. So as we move forward, I'm excited about a great start, but I think as we move forward together, it'll be exciting to be able to come together and continue to find ways that we can improve Wycomico County. So thank you all. Yes, I'll turn it over to Dr. Briggs. Thank you for the grant report.
Thank you, Dr. Stauffer.
I had to remind him.
Yes, you did.
I'm pleased to share some brief information from our August grants report. This past month, we received funding for two grants totaling approximately $70,000. One of the grants was from MSD-E as a part of their literacy funding initiative to help provide high-quality instructional materials aligned with the science of reading. And the other grant was from Donors Choose to help middle school TAD students learn more about the ecosystem of the Chesapeake Bay, specifically dogfish sharks. We submitted applications for another 22 grants, and I'll look forward to updating everyone on their status at an upcoming board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Briggs. Dr. Stauffer. 4.1, approval of open session minutes from the meetings of August 9th with regular meeting. August 30th was a work session open and a special meeting open on August 30th. So I'll entertain a motion. It's our second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, carried. Consent items, 5.1 to 5.5. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is our motion to approve the consent items.
Moved to approve.
It's our second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, carried. Action items, 6.1. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent and the school building commission, is our motion to accept the final feasibility study for the Fruitland Primary Project as reviewed and discussed in the August 30, 2022 board work session and authorize the submission of the document to the state for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Kayla Campbell, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Stauffer, Chair Malone, Vice Chair Murray, and board. As reviewed during the August 30th work session, a feasibility study was completed for Fruitland Primary School to assess the condition of the existing building and offer recommendations for renovations, additions, or replacement based on facility conditions and program needs. With input from senior leadership and instruction, it was determined the pre-K through second program used for the new 650-student Beaver Run Elementary School would also meet the needs for the Fruitland Primary students and community, and was used as a basis for this study. With the assistance of Horcop Lemach, architects, engineers, multiple options were generated, including option A, a limited renovation, option B, minor renovation addition, option C, renovation medium addition, option D, renovation major addition, and option E, new replacement school. The feasibility study was reviewed with the school building commission on August 25th, where they unanimously recommended option E, new replacement school. The study was then presented at the board work session, where there was consensus that option E, new replacement school, best meets the needs of the students served by this facility and should be the recommended option to move forward for the Fruitland Primary project. If the feasibility study is approved here today, it will be submitted to the state in support of a planning request in the FY 2024 CIP, and we will proceed with finalizing the educational specification. I stand for questions.
Any board members have questions? I know we covered it in the work session, but is there anything you want to add? Okay, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, it's carried. 6.2. Is there a motion to approve the FY 2024 to 2029 capital improvement plan and budget, which was reviewed and discussed during the August 30, 2022 work session, for submission to the acting county executive and the state? Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, Ms. Campbell.
All right. Good evening again. A draft of the FY 2024 CIP, or Capital Improvement Program, was presented at a work session on August 30th. We reviewed the educational facility's master plan to show how special initiatives, projected enrollment, capacity, and the facility needs indexes are used to prioritize our funding requests. We stress the importance of data-driven decisions. We've reviewed the top four county and state priorities in detail, as well as the remaining six projects encompassing the top 10 priority list. No substantial updates were made in the final version of this document since initial review. I stand for questions.
Any questions from my colleagues? Okay, assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Carried. 7.1, public comments. Public comment section of the agenda is an opportunity for the superintendent and the board to listen to individuals' own comments on topics concerning Wycomico County public schools. The board chairman has the right to limit public comments in length or those concerning personnel or student matters, which clearly identify an individual or individuals' appeals or legal matters that are before the board, negotiations and topics that are more appropriately addressed in closed session or privately with a staff member. Only verbal comments are permitted during public comment session of a board meeting. Written, printed, audio, or video material may be submitted via comments@wcboe.org. New signs or posters may be displayed by the public during board meetings. Each speaker shall address all comments directly to the board and speak only from the designated location for public comments. So some registered in advance, some registered this evening, which is our current policy. So number one registrant was Luke Angelat, who, topics are multiple. And I think everyone knows by now, it's three minutes, and I'll give you something at 30 seconds if you don't see the clock, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Stauffer and the members of the board. I would first like to start by thanking Chair Malone and Mr. Brady for reaching out after my comment last month. In fact, Mr. Brady sat down and explained the entire reason behind the switch to block scheduling. I think I thanked him like five times already, so it's like the sixth time. But my opinions have changed. I now see the benefits. But I can live with the fact that it's probably here to stay. So yeah, as I stated last month, I was a senior during the 2020, 2021 school year, and I had no idea why there was a change to our daily schedule. So I just say, in the future, I hope that this board will communicate with students when a significant change will occur, so they'll have to make their own theories as to why, hopefully, in the future. I come forward tonight to speak on the virtual learning plan that passed unanimously at the last meeting. I was a bit surprised, honestly, that it passed unanimously, considering the issues this county currently faces. There's a co-people running for the county council and county executive with broadband internet access as a policy. Something they plan to address. I'll be honest with you, I live outside the city limits of Salisbury, and during my junior and senior year, I didn't, I wasn't really able to learn that much. I think the only thing I really learned was the word asynchronous. So I hope that we can see the issues this county has. And when we're making policies, think about the county. The main issue I had was, not only that, it was more the getting rid of the hotspots for children with no internet access. My fear, like, my fear is that we're snowed in, and this, for example, would take five days for virtual, virtual learning. Many children will learn basically nothing for those five days. Because of how block scheduling is, that five days is almost like 10 days of traditional learning lost. And I fear that some students will be left behind. Especially as a child of working-class immigrants, I'm a bit worried about policies like this that could affect students disproportionately. I hope this board will remember all different sorts of people, whether they're making the decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Joseph Fanosa. Topic is teacher and staff support.
Thank you, sir. You got my name right this time. Thanks. Good evening, Superintendent Stauffer and members of the board. Before I begin, I'd just like to first express my gratitude, both from myself and others with regard to the end of the terms of Vice Chairman Murray and Mr. Fitzgerald coming here several years ago and starting a family. I've heard endless wonderful things about your service and your particular support for the teachers in this community, and your work and contributions will certainly be ever appreciated. With that in mind, I would like to bring up some concerns that are obviously ongoing, continuous things with regard to the teacher shortage and with regard to, even shortages with regard to substitute teaching. Having helped educate and train many current teachers in the school system locally, one of the things that continually comes up, of course, is the shortage of staff in teaching. And a continual issue that is brought up by them after their experience keeps going back to issues of both compensation and overall environment. One of the things that has been brought up, of course, recently is the fact that there are many ongoing openings even for substitute teachers. Now, the substitute teaching schedule, for those of you that know it, generally runs from about 7:30 a.m. to about 3:30 p.m., so an eight-hour workday. The current rate of pay for substitutes is essentially $125 per day, if you have a BA. A good majority of possible substitute teachers don't yet have that in the community. And one of the problems that seems to be an issue with that is that we have so many future prospective teachers in Salisbury University, at Warwick, and other institutions. And they often would like to have the experience and the exposure, and it's a great way to make money. The problem, though, is a simple one of free-market capitalism. They can make much more money elsewhere. I have students who would very much want to be substitutes. They can make more money at Wawa or Royal Farms. And considering that we're educating our children, considering that this is one of the greatest investments in our society, it would seem just a logical thing that we would invest in that. At a minimum, $150 a day for substitute teaching would put it at about $18 an hour, which would put us on par with the private sector. I think that's gonna become an issue that is gonna be increasingly hard to ignore as we move into the next year and the shortages become more apparent. I say that, of course, as a parent of a special-needs child.
30 seconds.
Sure thing. I say that as a parent of a special-needs child who often is in a situation in which those staff and teaching shortages is very much crucial to their safety and their supervision. That being said, I want to give a shout-out to all of our teachers who are currently on the front lines in the schools. Going through, of course, the last two years has been a tremendous challenge, and the ongoing vilification and bullying and harassment that they have received by some prospective politicians running for the school board is an ongoing, open concern that we have. So good luck, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fred Conley. Block scheduling, flex classes, and scheduling. It's your choice.
Superintendent Stauffer, board members. I think this will be my 27, 28, 29, and 30th minute on block scheduling, so it's nothing new to us. I'm just gonna share with you a couple of things of what my daughter has gone through this year as far as scheduling. Before I do that, I'd like to point out, Ms. Satauski, you had asked for a survey to go to every parent about their block scheduling.
Yes, I do.
I've not seen anything on that. I'm a parent. I haven't seen one, nor do I know of any, any work. So I don't know if they just ignored you, or if it's coming, but good luck on that. The other thing is the AP scores, and the AP scores, we're told, wouldn't go down. I'd ask every board member to please ask to see the AP scores from last year, and as you do that, please pay attention to the as you do that, please pay attention to the number of kids that actually took the test. My two students refused to take the test, they don't think they're prepared. So let's go to a student, this is a junior in high school, last year at the dinner table at the end of the year, I'd asked her about her schedule. She gave me her schedule, I said, sweetheart, that's not, that, no. She goes, Dad, this is my life, not your wish for my life. I said, Dad, doesn't sound like you. Where'd that come from? She goes, oh, that's what we were told when we filled out the schedule. This is not our parents, this is us. That's what she was told. She's in VPA and she's in culinary. So the next day, I asked my wife to call guidance. Guidance told us, yep, their schedule is correct, and that she would still meet the minimum requirement to graduate next year. This is a college-bound student who his goal is not to meet the minimum requirement by the end of the year. Her schedule also has her going to three high schools. She starts her day at Y High, goes to Bennett, and then to Parkside. Second period was an 80-minute study hall, followed by a 45-minute flex class. I will say the flex classes are more offerings this year than there were last year. Her 45-minute flex class is board games. All year long, 45 minutes a day, she will be doing board games at Bennett. As of last night, her schedule is still not complete. We're still working to try and get her in the proper classes. I think we got it straight tonight. So at the end, she has, this is the big deal, she has VPA, which is a great program, and she has culinary arts and board games all year long. She will have pre-calculus, AP physics, and.
Thirty seconds.
Warwick English for half a year. Please think about that. Culinary arts, VPA all year, AP physics, half the year. We couldn't offer her English through the public schools, so now we have to pay for her to go to Warwick for AP English. Block scheduling is not working for these students. Please continue to investigate.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Ashanti. The topic is having to preregister to speak at WCBOE meeting.
President Malone and members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Stauffer and all those assembled, good evening. My name is Mary Ashanti. I'm a grandparent of students in Wycomico County Public Schools and also a community advocate. Our concerns are about the recent public comment policies. We think that this policy disenfranchised those who do not have internet service and/or no knowledge of how to use the computer. Also, it affects negatively those families that have a hard time arranging their schedule to attend such meetings, and so they're not necessarily able to go online and, and, and complete those. So I ask that you keep that in mind, keep a lookout for that, and revise as needed, because we do not want to, and I don't think that you want to have people thinking that you don't want to hear from them, and that what they, their concern do not matter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lynn Mitchell. Topic is concern about transparency.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Stauffer. My name is Lynn Mitchell, and I do live in Wycomico County. I had no intentions of getting up here tonight to speak, but I'm starting to get quite frustrated with the venue and the agenda. Your department, and Dr. Stauffer, you did bring this up when you did your report, so I hope what you did say does come to fruition. Your department claims to be an open door with full transparency, but you'd limit the amount of people in attendance by holding it at the Long Avenue area again. I spoke with Andrea, Dr., Mr. Malone's secretary, yesterday, and she was very nice about it. She informed me that it was moved back to Long Avenue due to the fact that they were not expecting a large crowd. Why wouldn't you be prepared for a large crowd based on all the undesirable issues going on and being involved with the school right now? We've got three other auditoriums here. You've got Bennett, you've got Parkside, you've got Y High. They're already set up for audiovisual. We don't need to go to Westside if that's not feasible, but we have another area that we can use. As a past Wycomico parent and current Wycomico County taxpayer, it's very concerning with the matters at hand. We continue to voice the same concerns at each meeting. The overspending on the books and the materials, the vulgar pornographic books at each and every school, the security issues, COVID restrictions, COVID vaccines, mask mandates, busing issues, no pay, low pay, and the list just goes on and on, and we're getting nowhere. We found out that the public was also made fun of on the last video from the board. That was very discerning. We're not going to go away. We will continue to hold our kids' education and safety at the foremost of this administration. No boards, no teachers' union, no government will or should be the deciding factor in our children. They are ours, they're yours to educate, not to indoctrinate. My devotional on Sunday was about turning our back on God. He will not bless a nation that does not hold standards according to His laws. Here's what I know. When I'm dead and I have to stand before God.
Thirty seconds.
I have to account for my actions, and I don't want Him to ask me why I allowed such evilness to go on with our children. I will do my part, and you need to really consider what and how your actions are imposed upon the kids you claim to represent. You too will be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Edward Lee. Topic is financial literacy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of board. I respectfully yield my time.
Our next speaker is Deborah Dryden. Topic is enrollment.
Well, I'm not really sure whether this is something that you want to be discussed here, but it's very difficult to maneuver the enrollment process when there are people in the administration that will not communicate, or basically keep from telling you whether your child is being accepted in a transfer, and then you, you're told that a letter was sent out, there is no letter. Four or five days later, still, no letter. When you try to speak to the administration, they then threaten you with being banned from the school property. I have grandchildren that we pulled out of this education system because of the way things were running with the pornography, as she was speaking, with parents having no rights, period. We opted to try again and put them back in school this year, and one would need to be approved for a transfer to a different school based on daycare situation because of the parent working. That was denied with no explanation whatsoever. We were not given the opportunity to actually speak with the person who was making that decision. Instead, we were given the runaround and told, they'll call, they'll call, they'll call, they don't call. And then when you go there, you're told they're in a meeting, and you sit and wait, and then you're told something else, and then they're like, well, just, we'll let them call you. They don't call you. And you keep calling and calling, and then they're irritated because you're calling. And then you go back out, and then you still get no response from the administration, other than the next time when you go in and you decide, okay, we've had enough, this child's not being transferred to the school they need to be in so that the parent can go to work. So, the daycare, or the aunt that's babysitting.
Thirty seconds.
Is now going to move her child out of that school, because if you can't communicate with the administration at the school, how can you trust them with your child? So now I have two grandchildren back out of the school system. And if you want to speak to me privately, I will let you know their names and who's doing what. I've had board members tell me, well, then you need to put your child in a cab every day to send them to the other school. That's not correct. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that concludes public comment. As always, we post on our website public if there's questions and issues that we can answer publicly. If it's more appropriate to contact you directly for a private conversation, we'll be doing that as well. But we appreciate the comments and the public input. Thank you. So, eight point one, board members' reports. If it's okay, I'll start to my right with Mr. Palmer. Hope you're ready.
Thank you, Gene, I'm ready. I just wanted to say about six years ago, a lot of people would be coming here complaining about the air conditioning in schools and using chicken fans in the schools, and that these schools were falling down, and the bathrooms were falling apart, and the schools were old, and we weren't getting any new schools, and I want you to take a close look now at what is going on. I think we have a very good program, and I think we have a good handle on our building, construction, and maintenance. A lot has been done during the summer, and a lot is planned. I stood at the Beaver Run School the other day and watched as the kids came in, and everything went real well, though I'm a little confused by some red cones that are in one place in the driveway, but I'll find out about that soon. The thing is, this, these are things that are planned ahead of time, long in advance. The Fruitland school right now is being planned long in advance, and it's going to be a good school. Plus, the maintenance is still going on, so that's, that's all good things. In that time, we've come up with some things that are not so good, and we see parents involved in what's going on in schools, and I, for one, I am glad to see that. I'm glad to see parents come forward and talking to us. I'm glad to work with them. I look forward to working with them in the future, and you have every right to be here. I will be working with a group soon, and it'll be on something everybody doesn't like to talk about. It's CRT, but I am working on that with another group, and as I, as I learn about it, I am also going to be bringing it back to you, and if you have something, feel free to come up to me or call me and talk to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Murray.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank all of our staff. You don't hear me? Can anybody hear me? Okay. I'd like to thank all of the staff for a good opening of our school year. There was a lot of hard work in preparing the classrooms, and the teachers preparing, and their in-service and all, but everyone working hard. Dr. Stauffer, I also would like to thank you for welcoming staff, students, parents, and keeping everyone informed and visible. I'm wishing Wycomico County schools, students, staff, parents, community, a very successful year in 2022 and 2023. As always, I have said, I also appreciate hearing the public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Brown.
Okay. First, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Rebecca Matthews for being our Teacher of the Year for 2022-23, and also being a finalist for Merlin Teacher of the Year. I think that's outstanding, because there are six other counties that have individuals vying for their position, but they all are across the bridge, so that makes us very special, and that makes you very special to be here representing Eastern Shore, okay? Secondly, a couple of years ago, we started a second generation, gen-generation programs for scholars at Wycomico Senior High School, and this year was the second year for it, and the Merlin Business Roundtable have offered $2.5 million to students to continue their post-education. Seventeen students from Wycomico High School have made that list, and seventy, I think about 70% of them are going on to post-education based upon this. They will get a free ride to any Merlin college they want to go to. I think that's fantastic, and says a great deal for what our school system represents and the students that we are able to help move on to careers. Another thing, I'm real pleased about the support that we get from businesses. I've read in the paper, was happy to see that the Gateway Subaru have awarded Delmar Middle, Delmar Elementary School, $10,000 grant to purchase materials and things to help the students there at Delmar Senior High School, and this is the second time they have done that, so that's really pleasing to hear. I think all of us had an opportunity to meet with all the new teachers at a breakfast at James &amp; Bennett, and gosh, looking out at the audience, they all look so young. I think when I was in school, elementary school, it looked like they were all old teachers. But these really looked young, looked energetic, and the thing that amazes me, most of us, when we're working with computers, we're kind of, you know, we're not really, we're challenged to the degree that those kids aren't, they were, I mean, texting and doing whatever they needed to do, and I think those are the ones who do extremely well when we have to do the virtual learning. But that was great to see, those individuals. The other thing is that we had a leadership breakfast with our superintendent, and he has set the agenda for the year, and I think one of the plus factors for him is the fact that he is from Wycomico County, reared and went to the school system here, and it was interesting to hear his story. And my wife, first year, was at Beaver Run Elementary School, and he was a student at Beaver Run Elementary School, and he did live not too far from the school, and oftentimes I've heard about kids being on the playground when they shouldn't be, but I understand, he was not only on the playground, he was on top of the roof. So, to myself, I wanted to say it's going to be a great deal, an honor to work with you, and I'm sure that all the public and all the administration and staff feel the same way. You're homegrown, and that's a big plus factor for you and for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Satawski.
I attended the groundbreaking for Junior Achievement, the ribbon cutting for the new library technology van at the county fair, the new teachers' breakfast, the leadership breakfast, and I accompanied Dr. Stauffer on his visits to J&amp;B, Bennett Middle, Parkside, Prince Street, and Pinehurst. I'm going to talk more about that in a minute. I also attended the open houses at Prince Street in Pinehurst, and on Sunday, September the 4th, at my church, Bethesda United Methodist, we had Education Sunday, and I had the privilege of addressing our congregation at both of the services. I would like to comment on my visits with Dr. Stauffer. You hit a grand slam. You really did. Not only did I talk to the teachers from those five schools, but teachers from many other schools. All the comments were positive. They particularly were interested in my story, where you told about your life's journey. In your story, you thanked teachers that you had at Beaver Run, Y Middle, and Y High. Several times during the last four years, I have stressed the importance it is to thank a teacher. And last Friday, four days ago, this letter came in the mail. It is a note. It is a note from a former student of mine that I have not seen since she graduated as valedictorian of her class of Laurel High School in 1969. Sometimes we wonder what has happened to some of our former students, and I want to share this note with you. Dear Ann, Mrs. Sterling to me. I was in Rehoveth in June, and my brother was there to attend his Laurel High School reunion. He told me you were there also, so I want to take this opportunity to thank you. Just to jog your memory, I was the editor of the Bulldog Newspaper my senior year, and you were our advisor and also journalism teacher. I have always appreciated how you treated us. It felt like we were colleagues, not kids. I remember one time you invited us, the newspaper staff, to your house for a party. That collaboration we had on the Bulldog was the beginning for me. I went on to a career in broadcasting. I just retired five years ago after 36 years in TV news, 30 at WCPO in Cincinnati. In 1969, as you know, there were very few women on the air in TV. I was just beginning, and I didn't necessarily think it wasn't field open to me. So, I thank you for your encouragement, and the experience that taught me journalism was fun, interesting, and a place where I would fit in. I hope you are well and happy. You made a difference in my life and many others. I am so grateful. I wanted you to know, with love and appreciation, Carol Williams. I had not heard or seen from this lady since she graduated in 1969. What I want to get across this evening and go back to Dr. Stauffer and his thanking his teachers that he had, I want you to think about taking a pen in hand and think about a teacher that you have had that encouraged you, and all my teachers unfortunately are deceased, but I have teachers that my children had and my grandchildren had. So, in the next week or so, I challenge all of you here and those listening, take pen in hand and write a note and thank that teacher. That's why I wanted to go last, Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Ms. Sefowski. So, I attended many of the same events as my colleagues, the Junior Achievement Ribbon Cutting, which is going to be a tremendous facility over there in the old Kmart parking lot. It's going to be great for all the students in the county. They'll have storefronts, they'll have live-action type businesses in there manned by small business folks, so it'll be some good hands-on stuff. I attended the United Way event at Laton's Chance, the Folk Festival. Many of you probably went to that as well, saw a lot of folks down there. It's a great event for the county. I'm in the middle of the high school reffing season for soccer. I did six high school games last week and saw a lot of enthusiastic fans and students, just like our student reps reported. It's nice to see everybody out at the games, parents, athletes. It was very enjoyable. And then I visited Mardella on my own, like Mr. Palmer was talking about, construction, and walked around the site. And I thought about 2010, 11, 12, and 13, my son and I coached Mardella Boys Soccer at that school where the track had holes in it. We didn't even want them to run track as part of their fitness, and the field had holes in it. Now, there's out back, it's great athletic complex, and now we're improving the school, and it's about time. So, it's, that's something we're all very proud of, that we're going to be able to deliver that. And finally, as others have said, I want to congratulate Dr. Stauffer and the entire team, including teachers and everyone, on a successful opening of schools. It's your first as superintendent. Hope there are many more. But when he sent out his schedule that he was going to visit all 24 locations and give the presentation, I thought, wow, that's an aggressive schedule. It's good to shoot high. You know, he won't make it all of them, but he'll make most of them. He hit every one of them. I went to two or three with him. It was a very, very aggressive goal, but I think it was the right thing at the right time, beginning of the school year as the new superintendent. And your team is outstanding. I want to mention Liso Ashby on the Mardella thing, because she's the one that keeps all the construction going. Thank you very much if she's here or not here now. But, so, just to wind it up, been a very successful first couple of weeks of school. Thank you to all the teachers, all the parents that have participated here tonight, all the parents that are going to be involved with our students' school. We need everybody's involvement. We all need to pull in the same direction to make the public school system great, and so I appreciate everyone here, appreciate Dr. Stauffer and his team. And so that concludes our meeting, and safe travels to everyone. Thank you.